Eighteen to twenty-five year olds, so I'm hoping that gets cleaned up.
Pickleball.
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 Sorry?
That's your, that's the thing that you're about to see is pickleball.
Yeah, my parents are obsessed.
Alright, yeah.
I just said pickleball, I like pickleball, that sounds fun.
There's like a lot of places in Dallas with pickleball, like you can go and play pickleball and eat and like have drinks and stuff with friends, so I feel like pickleball is just like an all-around thing that everybody can enjoy.
Sounds nice after running up and down Kennedy.
Yeah, can we like make Kennedy shorter, please? We have to run that hill every year at the beginning of the season.
That's okay. Oh yeah, like I- I didn't know we could suggest like Chipotle? Can we bring a Chipotle out here? No, actually I've gotten very healthy.
So now, what I was gonna say is now you know where I get my great ideas.
Comes from us.
Thank you guys, so much. Okay, now I have a couple more here, gonna give us a presentation. They're not nervous a bit?
I'm not.
This is the way it came up, so I hope this works for you.
Yeah, that works. Sorry about that. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Elijah Kersey, we are sharing our experience as college students. Like I said, my name's Elijah Kersey and I'm from Brigham City, Utah, and I'm here to play basketball but also to get my associates of science, so we're interested in that.
My name is Jamir Todd, I'm a sophomore at CNCC from Denver, Colorado, studying business. One of our experiences we learned is time management in college, that's a huge thing being out on your own, no babysitter, your sleep schedule is very important, especially having a seven forty-five AM class, going to sleep at two AM is not a good idea. I learned that building a routine every day, following a specific structure also helps a lot, you know, making things that are usually irregular, regular on a daily day basis. Learning to take initiative and not procrastinate, you know, the time to do the work is now, you know, it's easy to say I'll do it later, I'll do it tomorrow, but the best way to do it is just get it done. And studying is very important for your tests, just preparation, you know, studying is important, habit.
As a college student, academic challenges are pretty tough and maintaining motivation to do your schoolwork while you're out here by yourself, no one to get on you during your schoolwork can be challenging. It's also a heavy workload as student athletes, trying to maintain, just going to practice, playing your games, traveling, and then trying to keep your schoolwork together, so that could be an academic challenge. And then for some people like myself, test anxiety is like a thing, and so I take extra time on my tests, get nervous, whatever. But being a college student has helped me learn to just take a deep breath and just go about it, do your tests, if it works, it works, if it don't, then there's always the next step in life. And then just the complex material is a little bit different than high school. High school is like a little bit of a breeze and then coming to college was kind of a just awakening, like to step up your game, and so, yeah, that was it.
Your social life is a big part of college, a college student, your social life is very important because you spend a lot of time with friends, teammates, people you know, you're living together with a roommate at dorm. So you're building lifelong friendships, you know, so that's very important. It's also important to surround yourself around the right people, because some people just, you know, they're not there for the right reason, they would drain your energy, your mental health, you know, you guys don't have the same beliefs, and it might not, and it might end up biting you in the back. Networking is also very important just because you never know when you're next to the next Elon Musk, you never know who your peers are, so building relationships might help in the future to start your own business or anything you take in life. Social events on the weekends, you know, indulging in parties and stuff could be a good way to relax your mind, you know, take off after long weeks of work. But it's also important to stay true to yourself because people might be indulging in the wrong activities that, you know, you or yourself have not done, and just try to say no to peer pressure.
Okay, like I said, we're college athletes and we just, as being a college student, being a college athlete helps develop mental toughness. And sometimes it's, it's, you know, easy to give up, coming out here in Rangeley from a different town, a different, different state, so it's like, just like being away from your mom or your dad could be hard. But as long as you build that mental toughness and just push through, then you have a shot at anything you're trying to do. And then just traveling with the team, you build bonds and brotherhoods that can last a lifetime. So while traveling, like gets a little bit of jokes in and just like, and those trips were long, like I'm talking like from Rangeley to Northern Idaho, that trip's insane, so I'm telling you, like, traveling with your boys, it helps a lot. And then you just have a support system to fall back on, just like the community, like she's at every one of our games, she's always nice, and just things like that. Your coach got your back and your teammates, and it's just really nice to be there.
Mental health is a very important aspect in daily college life because it's important not to get too high or too low, you know, stress and anxiety from tests and a heavy workload, you know, it's, it's there, it's present. So I, you just have to develop coping mechanisms, like surround yourself around the right people, studying habits, you know, and it's important for people to know that the mental health is actually there, it's a huge aspect, you know, being away from family sometimes, it's first time away from home, so it's a big, it's, it's very hard on your mind. And being in a community arranged, it's like, it's a small community, so that's great, so it's like, you're always there to ask for help, you know, like, small community, there's always someone, someone to help you.
And then just being a college student, career preparation is huge, you develop skills in college, I was like, like right now we're doing a business, the communications thing, I would never expect myself talking to people like a setting like this, it's kind of-
A city town hall.
It's nerve-wracking, but I'm here and I'm happy to be here, so just also network opportunities, bringing that up again, it's just important that once you're in college, you do meet people and they can help you later down the line to do what you want to. And then also in this class, we're working on resumes, so resume building, being in college, it helps your resume to what you're trying to do later in life as well. And just getting adult experiences from being grown up from child to being a grown adult, it, college really improves that as well, so.
Personal growth has been a big aspect for me in college, just because, especially being arranged, it just gives you a lot of time to self-reflect and just think about where you want your life to go and where you want to head and where you see yourself. And like being away from your parents and stuff, who you might have different values, you know, it gives you a time to think about your own values and where you see yourself and your kids, and just a lot of time to think about life, you know, the bigger picture of where you're going.
Before I got here, I never had a roommate that I never met before, my roommate's from Brazil, so like, we got a little bit of our differences and even though they're like, you gotta learn to fight through those, because you're gonna be living with each other for at least nine months. So if you don't work on your, the communication, like, I know at the beginning it was a hard thing, like trying to figure out who's gonna buy their toiletries or like, or-
Who's gonna shower first?
Like, all of that, I'm talking like, who's, who's gonna use the bathroom and how long, you just gotta learn, you'd have to learn that, and my roommate Arthur, I appreciate him a lot, so it just helps with being a college student as well.
We appreciate you guys for your time to listen to us about our experiences as a college student, any questions?
So I'm sure there are gonna be questions.
Same question that I had for the ladies, where do you see yourself in ten years? And was Rangeley what you expected before you'd gotten here?
I was not expecting myself to like Rangeley as much as I do, it's, at first I thought it was gonna be lonely out here, but I made some friends, so that's nice. And then for ten years, I wanna continue to play basketball to help me get to being a physical therapist like her, and hopefully just work on that and continue to do that.
In ten years, I see myself continuing my family's real estate business, my dad currently owns some properties downtown Denver, he's renting them out, right now one is a bar, and he has a couple of studios for rent every month. So I just plan on learning, taking my skills that I'm learning in life, you know, maybe changing something else of my own sorts, you know, continue that, and I took a visit to Rangeley, so I know exactly what to expect, you know.
What, you know, and like Alan or Tom Manager asked the young ladies, is there something that we could do differently to involve you folks more in the small community? Because a lot of times you come from those big communities and it really is shell shock, when you come here, you're not used to maybe the climate, you're not used to the smallness of the town of people being so nice. I mean, in a big city, if you're walking down the street and you say hi to somebody, what are their, most times they're just gonna look down or look the other way, like, why are you talking to me? To where in a small town, a lot of them folks here, I know, would be like, hey, how you doing? So what is something that the town could do to improve the college students with the community itself?
That's a tough question, but I feel like Rangeley is a great community and it is very together, like all the materialistic things, you know, everybody wants some McDonald's and stuff, so I don't know, like, that's a hard question, I would, I could come back to you at that.
Right, right, well, I'm proud of each and every one of you, thank you for coming tonight, this is not easy, and as you stated earlier, of all places, a town council meeting.
Thanks for having us.
Welcome and thanks for coming to Rangeley.
I had enough of that.
It's just too bad that your instructor happens to be the mayor too, that's why he'd be in the town council.
Absolutely. Have as many as you want. What, if you could add something- Take as many as you want.
Like a Walmart, like supermarket, like small market, it doesn't have to be huge.
Thank you so much for coming.
No, you did good.
You did awesome, yeah. I'm proud of you.
I'm not sure, that's tough, I don't know. It's not bad, the town's not bad, it's just small.
The more you do it, the more you get.
I'm McDonald's, you know, that's, that's all I really need.
I think some of the classmates are coming up to the hospital on Thursday.
It's not bad, it's a small community.
So last, last word I have for all five of you, don't forget you have class tomorrow. You guys can go, you don't have to stay.
An honor recommendation, I would give each and every one of you an A+ for tonight, A+ for a grade.
Hey, real quick, real quick, so I moved to Rangeley in nineteen ninety to come up here on a baseball scholarship, so just like you guys. So the first year I was up at college, it was like I was really confined to the college, like most of you guys are, you really had those boundary that you stayed in. That summer that I grad, or summer between my freshman and sophomore year, I actually moved down into Rangeley and worked through the summer down here. And here it is thirty-five years later that I'm still here, so my point to it is wherever you go, whatever you do, life is what you make of it. So this community here thirty-five years later is what I've made of it. So take that, take that into consideration as you move forward, life is what you make of it, and you guys are on the right track to making the best life that you can for you and your future families.
Thank you guys.
Have a good night, guys.
No, you can take it off.
Be in person.
You're good, you don't have to do it.
Number seven, changes to the agenda?
Yes, we have a change to fourteen B, the special event permit is being shortened from April twenty-fourth to the twenty-sixth to just April twenty-sixth.
Uh, public hearings, do we have anything? Committee and board meetings, number nine. Anybody have anything on that? I know that we haven't had a lot of meetings going on lately, so.
Didn't you? Didn't you guys go to something?
We went to the energy symposium last weekend, uh Wednesday and Thursday. I didn't go Thursday, but Jeannie, Lisa and Alan were there Wednesday and Thursday. Um, a lot of uh people from all over the state, a lot of um. People talking about oil and gas and coal and regulations and permitting, permitting was the big topic on Wednesday. And how long it's taking companies for permitting and the whys and what fours when it came to all those things. Um, they did touch on severance money and um mineral money and they just said that. Pretty much what we all know is that it's just funding the state's deficit is what's gonna happen, so. Um, they touched third really on it though. Um, but they see an increase in oil and gas. But yet we're seeing severance money there. Doesn't make sense.
Well, the state's a billion dollars in debt, so there's part of it.
Yeah, they're, it, 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 I mean, the numbers were unreal when you saw them in black and white, but severance money was two years ago to what it is this year. It went from like a hundred and eighty-six million to now, like huge difference.
With the legislation that's flying through this legislative session, it's unbelievable what they're doing. It's robbery.
So, but it was a good energy symposium the day I went. I don't know if Jeannie and Helen can touch on the second day, cause I were able to go the second day.
There's a lot of energy companies there that were presenting information on, they were approached by the state. To increase energy, but they wanted it to be green energy. And they talked about. How many acres of solar you would have to have to create, not even a portion of what we have right now. And that wind actually produces a little better, but we're limited here on what we can do with wind. And they set this goal of having it by a certain time and they pretty much just said, there's no way. If they do everything electric like they want, that, that goal will be met. So what would happen was they would be buying. Energy from another state or something and bringing it in, but you would see energy prices go up. And I can tell you that. I was raised in a coal community and when um a certain administration came through and kept that coal out. That my parents lived in about a thousand or eleven hundred square foot home and it was about twelve hundred dollars during the winter just to heat. Or to heat it.
So, so when it defeats their purpose, if we end up buying it from somebody else who's still using coal and gas.
Yes, you are. So, there was a lot of that and I thought the energy companies did a great job of presenting their case and uh. They didn't hold back very much. And they talked about how they're making it impossible for energy companies to be in. If you're not growing, to be in the state.
And, and the, the only other thing I don't think they ever tell us is, kinda talked about this earlier is, so I have solar, I can have thousands of acres of. Solar panels working, but I don't put that many people to work. There's not that many people that I need. I can have wind energy, but the wind, windmills or the, the turbines can only work during certain times, otherwise the wind has to be a certain speed. But not over this speed, because if it does, they have to shut them down. And the only reason I know that's cause I've been there. And my, I, I. I'm not against green energy as a compliment to what we already have, but I, I really find this difficult myself, so.
Um, we also had a community outreach meeting the day after our last council meeting. Um, so all the special districts came in. Alan and he could kind of put a face and a name with everybody. Um, we met up at CNCC for that, had lunch and. Let's discuss things with the special districts. Um, and then Thursday after the last time council meeting, we also had RDA, RBC. Um, a big topic on that was the rare grant and finalizing it and approved by the RDA, so.
And that was approved and by Monday, the small grant portion of that will be released to the business.
It was a good conference. Uh, there was no earthquakes revealed to us. It was, it was a good conference, they did a good job.
Isn't there an oil and gas symposium or something going on in Greeley later on this week? Yeah.
Probably. I know this one is put on by Koga, so that one I did last year. Yeah, Kirby Lynn is in charge of the one in Newcastle every year.
Okay.
He does a great job.
Yeah, he does, yeah.
Uh, council reports, anything from council? Okay, number eleven, supervisor reports, Kelly?
Okay, do you want me to go back there or?
Probably better if you did.
Okay.
We can see you better. I can't see it.
Alrighty, it's been a while. So I've got kind of a lot to get through, but we'll probably skip over some of it unless you wanna go into more detail. So as of April first of this year, the Kern River Wyoming Natural Gas Index was discontinued. We had been using uh, ever since October of twenty twenty-one, we used the uh Colonel Opal Opal index price. Because it was seen as uh maybe a little more stable than the Rocky Mountain index price we were using in the past. But that's no longer an option. As they discontinued it, if you want me to go into that further, I can tell you why it happened. Uh, mark, well, market shifts, technol- technological advancements, reduced transaction volume and emergence of. Alternative indices. Basically, they don't see it the same way they once did. And so we had no other choice but to go back to the NWP Rockies Index. Which is what we used for years and years, ever since way before I ever came to work here. And it worked just fine. Uh, for years and years.
Kelly, what they, did we pre-purchase some?
Yes, and this has nothing to do with what we pre-purchased, it's just the index price. They're no longer using Kern Opal plus five percent or five cents, I'm sorry. But so when we did go back to Rockies. Uh, we were before October of twenty twenty-one, we were um on Rockies just uh plus four percent. Or four cents, I'm sorry, summit fee. And so now they're just giving us um NWP Rockies index flat. Uh, so, and honestly, over the years, Rockies was always a little bit cheaper than Kern Opal. But when we had those two incidents that um happened within. Less than two years of each other out in California and Texas, when it made the index price go haywire, then. You know, that's where we kinda wanted to get a little bit more stability with the index price, but that's not how they're seeing it right now. They're not seeing the Kern Opal index as much of an indicator that they used to see it as. So we are back on Rocky's price. And so we do. After all these hap- this happened, we did uh purchase, pre-purchase more gas than we had before. Uh, so uh, we ended up purchasing, purchasing some gas for October and April. Whether we, which we'd never done before. And so. Now, in prior years, we had none for October, now we have five thousand. We had none for November. Or ten thousand for November, now we have ten thousand still. Uh, December was fifteen thousand, now we have twenty thousand. January, we had fifteen thousand, now we have twenty thousand. February was ten thousand, now we have fifteen thousand. March stayed at five thousand and you, we used to have nothing for April, now we have five thousand. Uh, MMBTU's or Decotherms, however you wanna look at it. And at some point between then and now, we had as much as fifteen thousand. For November, twenty-three thousand in January and ten thousand in March and seventy-five hundred for April. So. Uh, we could purchase a little more than we have now, if that's what we choose to do. What we, the contract we just finished, just in April, was at six forty-four uh per. MMBTU. The next contract that we have now for these uh amounts is at five thirty-six. You know, the thought was that after we changed, after the government changed, we might get, you know, be able to get. A little bit extra at a lower cost. But things have been pretty volatile because of other things that have gone on, so. But we do have those guaranteed amounts and we could still, before October, purchase some more if we feel like, you know, the price is right.
I think we ought to get to where we were like last fall on the mounts.
We can do that, we could purchase those extra amounts.
I mean, I don't know that it's gonna get as volatile as it was.
I mean, it's better, the five thirty-six contract is obviously better than the six forty-four. But you know, I guess we're hoping for, you know, um, and we actually did the contract five or six years ago, but. Last year, we just got finished with some gas that was just over three dollars. So that was awesome. And then this year, we just finished a contract that was four dollars and three cents, but we just may not see that anymore, you know, but. We'll do what we need to do to protect the public from the higher prices. But we still have those additional amounts that we can, you know, we're purchased through twenty twenty-seven, April, I believe. Right now with these amounts, but we can add to them if we can get some decent pricing.
You can add to those at any time or?
Yes, yes. I can uh, I can get a whole summit, within the next day, he'll shoot me the price. And, and it costs nothing to find out, you know, I can check as much as I want and whatever and. He'll give me an indication of what he thinks the trends are, but you know, they're not gonna tell you what to do because that's not there.
But that's what we, Kelly and Lisa did last year is kinda played that, kept getting prices from summit. And got it, I don't know if we got it at the all, all time low, but I think it's just like playing the star.
We had, at one point, we probably could have purchased at five oh eight, but it was bouncing around. That was the lowest I think I saw, but. We got five thirty-six.
Never know, it's strictly a stock market thing.
We could never, we could never run the gas line from three or some miles south of town to the north end of town or?
It's random.
Is it? Or are we hooked right into your guys' line?
Northwest pipeline, no. We're hooked to Northwest pipeline, or we used to have a connection to it.
Yes, oh yes, that's.
But the split of it is, it's out here three miles south of town. That's where the split in the markets are. One is the Opal market, which goes to the north, up to Washington, in Northern California, and the south goes to Texas.
Gotcha.
We can't access the Henry Hub for one thing, I mean, as far as pricing goes. Sometimes it's, right now, it's a little, up a little bit. But sometimes you can look at gas pricing and you're looking at the Henry Hub and it's like, how can their price be like two dollars and sixteen cents? And we're up here at four, but on this side of that mountain, we don't. So, and I know. I don't know all the details, I know they've finished part of a pipeline or some. Infrastructure or something. I know that a lot of that, all that um hub, that Kern River Wyoming hubs. In Wa- in, well, obviously in Wyoming, but I know a lot of their uh gas is going out west. Cal- uh California, Washington, Oregon. But the good news about that is if California ever has a big draw on it in one month, maybe it won't affect things as badly as it did. Before, but that's where a lot of their stuff's going right now, so.
Which is crazy because that state has more mineral extract in it than, I mean, there's a county out there that has more mineral extract.
Well, they're saying because, you know, they think their green energy, forty percent of their electricity is generated from natural gas.
So what you're saying is.
Then they're calling it green energy. So it's like, they wanna do, but anyway, so they're, yeah, they're.
Our state politics is killing us.
But they're, yeah, they're always gonna be a deep natural gas user, but they're selling it as green energy because it's, you know, we're electric, you know? It's like you're, well, you're using fossil fuels to create that, but I'm not gonna talk about the, you know. You can't, you know, you can't have a battle of the wits with an unarmed person, so we won't go there. Um, so I mean, at some point, if we want, we can have some meetings or something and, you know, go into some more detail and decide exactly, you know, what we're going to do, but. We're trying to stay on top of that.
I think, Kelly, I think once you get to that, that we should have a, a utilities meeting.
Yeah, and we can do that in, at any time and, you know, there's, like I said, we can go into some more details. And yeah, I know Alan's pretty, you know, new at this part of it probably especially, and so we can, we can. Give you maybe some more background and, you know, how this all comes about. So we can definitely do that. Uh, so far, more cricket wise, I believe the only place we've seen them so far is a juvenile stage. Around in the golf course area, uh where they were last year, kind of uh at the driving range in holes one and two. And they're very, in the smaller stage. Last year, when they hit that area, they were a lot larger. I've heard they've been up uh chase, you know, further away from town to some extent. We haven't seen anything. So what we're doing is we're trying to help them mitigate out there the best we can. We're uh trying to keep them from. We are mitigating them where they are and the areas, the easiest thing to do is to go along the dirt roads, county roads, whatever. A little ways from where they're congregated and run lines of that eco brand, the flake material, because should they start moving. Those directions and they will, you know, when they cross that, they will eat that and, you know, it does, it's pretty effective at killing quite a few of them. So, but we're just gonna try to stay on top of it, cause we did a lot of mitigation last year and we're. Overall, very successful to keep them out of town, really. You know, I know a couple of people thought if they had a couple in their yards, they were. Gonna die, but that's, you watch thousands of them crawl up your house and then I think he'll change your mind. But anyway, so we're, we're on top of that, we're uh going to, you know, keep on top of that. We're gonna hope we don't really have. Out, you know, a whole lot of more outbreaks of them. So in building and grounds, uh last month, uh. Building and grounds crews, along with assistance from the gas department, helped to, we completely remodeled one of the units in White River Village. Included new carpet linoleum, new cabinets, countertops, appliances, scraping the ceiling, patching, repainting, new shower. Vanity and most of the demolition, demolition work was completed by our crews and most of the insulation work as well. The carpet and linoleum was contracted out, so this was the last unit that we hadn't really touched. Since it was built in the eighties. So every unit down there has had some form of updates, you know, maybe not a complete update. But, and so we're working on, you know, that was quite the project. Uh, working on sprinkler systems and fertilizing, uh we hope to replace the sprinkler system at White River Village this year. It will be done by the town crew. We've got a uh, the equipment, whatever, to do it ourselves. We've begun weed and mosquito mitigation. Uh, the gas department, we've become, well, begun uh operator qualification training for this year. Each year, we have to keep up to date on our natural gas related qualifications. Some topics are covered annually. Some are only every three, four or five years. So we have a few of those we have to cover. Our cathodic protection, our corrosion control testing's been done for the year. We've moved on to our annual. Inspection of our gas mainline valves. We still have leak survey, atmospheric corrosion inspections. To do as well as an annual regulator inspection. Periodic meter changes, which we have to change meters out every ten years. They, or uh, gas meters are brought in, tested and painted every ten years. We have them mostly on a ten year rotating schedule. It's not like every ten years, we gotta go out and get every one of them. You know, the numbers aren't quite even, but it's, you know, so it's manageable. So those are in full swing, trying to get those done. So, those are in full swing, trying to get those done. Um, SERSA, who's the town's property casualty insurance, performed their annual records inspection. And that involves training, policies, procedures, and inspections that are supposed to be done by the town. We got a score of a hundred and ten points out of a hundred after we added our extra credit points. So, we did well there. So, that helps mitigate the costs of our insurance. And we've done, like I said, police department included, because they have a, they have training that's, you know, different from, you know, maybe the rest of us. And so, they've all stayed on top of that. And I appreciate that because that helps us, that helps us mitigate a lot of the costs for our insurance. So, any questions or comments, or?
I got one. Is the gas stuff that we were working with Dinosaur a few years back, is that a dead deal? Are we still working towards that goal of working with them, or?
We would gladly work with them. This is what happened. They had about, five, six years ago, they had a feasibility study done. And I thought that was a decent proposal. And in that proposal, they proposed that they come off of Williams Pipeline that was way closer. There are two options, closer to Dinosaur. They hired an engineering firm that their focus was getting fiber and gas to Dinosaur because they thought they could probably get more grant money. They got, we tried, and we tried to explain to this company how not cost-effective it would be to try to come from Rangeley, clear to Dinosaur with a gas line. They're gonna bury the gas line and the fiber in one trench. God knows what they would've found in the field. But there, honestly, they got hosed, I think, by this engineering company. And when they come up with the cost for that, it was so astronomical that even if they would've got a fifty or eighty percent grant, there would've been no way. So, I don't know that it's dead now, but I, that, they definitely, I would recommend they go back to the first feasibility study and work from there. But, yeah, they were definitely interested in that. That engineering firm did not do them any favors.
Gotcha.
Yeah. So, I, right now, it's kinda dead in the water, but down the road, maybe we can revive it. Because I definitely think it would work for both of us if, should they find it feasible to get gas. I think, you know, it'd work to both of our advantages because I think we could actually help them out without even adding another employee, probably, so.
Right.
I'm hoping that down the road, they might see things differently. But, yeah, that was just, even Williams tried telling them that it really wasn't feasible. But the company went ahead with their, you know, proposal to run it clear from Rangeley, and that just wasn't.
Feasible.
Right. It was too much money.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Okay, number twelve. Alan, town manager update?
I've only got one thing. Everything else's been covered pretty well, um, other than once we've got the agenda coming. And, uh, that's just real thank you note from the chamber. It reads, uh, Lisa, thank you for your continued support in making the crab track event successful. We really appreciate the donation and the utility gift certificates. And then it's signed by the members of the, um, chamber. So, that's really all I got, other than what we've got coming up on the agenda, so.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any old business? We don't, do we? Okay, new business. Fourteen A, discussion and action to approve the March financial summary.
I'll make a motion to approve the March financial summary as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Kyle. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Fourteen B, discussion and action to approve the special events permit for the Elk BPOE Lodge nineteen oh seven for Roar on April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, at the Rio Blanco County Columbine Park from one P M. to eleven fifty-nine P M.
Chris, would you mind coming up real quick and letting us know how it's? Just the question, uh, with it being the chamber event, how are you guys working that out?
So, we are actually, it's at Columbine Park, and we're gonna do just like we do with Buckenbowl, where we set up next to the stands. And, you know, all the entrances will have signs that say, no alcohol beyond this point. We're actually gonna do wristbands this year. And they say, I think it says like, age of verified, or whatever, you're twenty-one and older. Can't remember exactly what it says, but. And that's all we're technically doing with the Elks, with the event. Does that make sense?
Yep. So, just the, just the rodeo.
Yeah, just the rodeo.
Just the rodeo.
Yeah.
And we've gone through some issues with these special liquor licenses in recent times. So, I guess just the suggestion is, is dot all of your i's and cross all of your t's and do it like you've done in the past and make it a fun event for all. Thank you for doing that, Chris.
Yeah, thank you guys for stepping in there. That's great.
Anything else?
I'll make a motion to approve the special event permit for the Elk BPOE Lodge nineteen oh seven for Roar on April twenty-sixth at Rio Blanco County Columbine Park from one P M. till eleven fifty-nine P M.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Andy, seconded by Sean. Any other discussion?
I have just one question. And Mary Bell, you gave us the information of the change. Does the county know this, Vicki? The county administrator know the change?
I just learned of this tonight, so does Vicki know this?
I will make sure she knows that. I will call her tomorrow.
The change of the date.
Because I just found out.
Yourself?
Yes. So, I will call her tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, somebody of this courtesy to let Vicki know that it's just gonna be the.
And I can also email her also tomorrow morning.
That way there, we've got it all the way covered for you guys.
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, so the next three items, do you wanna talk about those all as one? Because we have three, I'm talking about the grants for the, uh, Dinosaur, so.
For the dinosaur?
So, what, I think if you just talk about them, then I can go through, because there're gonna be three different motions.
Okay. You want me to do them one at a time?
No, I would just go through all three of them.
Okay. So, there's three grants. We have A G and C, um, which has a five thousand dollar grant. We have the Main Street Mini Grants, which are, um, we can do, use three years of those, and they're five thousand dollars a year. So, that would add up to fifteen thousand dollars. And then, uh, tax lodging can be used for that because it's seen as tourism and marketing for the community. And, um, we are asking for five thousand dollars.
Okay. So, on the first one, you had to hear this, ten thousand, is it ten or five?
For twenty.
For the A G and C.
A G and C, five thousand dollars with the, five thousand dollars.
Okay. First of all, ten.
I will show you that Johnson, dude, is the engineer for the base of the dinosaur. Uh, the drums and all that. She can get those, uh, program. And some of what she's working with.
So, is that true that a designer of foundation for an elk or a dinosaur truly costs five thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Okay. I want to make sure that semantics. All. One, that we're, we haven't gotten, see, we have a designer.
So, I believe you are doing, you know, a little different check, they, uh, did the, a lot of the artwork and construction is doing, because manufacturing, this is manufactured with steel. Uh, look a little bit different, and probably around four thousand pounds, he's gonna deliver it. So, the price that we put in for the dinosaur is it was delivering. Uh, we're pretty excited about it. And if you'll remember when the, um, before we did the pocket park on mine, they had those, uh, dinosaur diamond signs that were kiosk. So, we did keep those, uh, that were pretty expensive. So, those will be installed at the outdoor museum as well. And the college has agreed to install a large plaque with all the information about Walter, which is, this dinosaur will be around.
So, we had some discussions tonight about how do we get people to stop in town? The east entrance is east, so not quite downtown. Um, but just thinking about it, you know, if I had, I do have a seventeen-year-old kid. He's gonna wanna stop and jump on that dinosaur and take a picture, right? So, what's the?
Slow down and think about it.
Well, my, my point to Jeannie is, is there room that we can get them to stop out in front of Town Hall? Because that's basically our only Main Street grass area that they can stop and get out. Is there, is anybody stopping putting something like that, or is it too clustered up to where?
I think it's too small. This dinosaur's gonna be big, maybe twenty-six feet long.
Twenty-six feet long?
Yeah, it's a big ass.
Jeez.
This isn't gonna be.
Well, I think what about even out there on the east entrance? I'm sure we could talk to the guy that runs that.
I mean.
Run on the west side.
Oh, wow. Sounds like a good idea.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to, to keep.
They thought we'd make them stop in town.
And they got, you know, a grocery store, a motel that is.
Well, that's totally a thought. Um, I just thought of the word we would put it.
So, so my, my thing, I, I think what Andy's saying, but maybe you start with what you're doing. I mean, I think that's a great idea. But maybe we add to throughout town. And maybe they are smaller that we put out in front of Town Hall or. So, that we kinda get that thing of all that's there.
I did. Lisa and I have talked about this, but I wouldn't do more dinosaurs. I mean, we have elk, we have, um, antelope on the outskirts of town. We have bear, but this is a sanctuary, just about every year. But, um, I think there's other animals that we could put, um, supply in town. And, and I really, they dredged, we got it dry, and they did the steel. Uh, and the office to turn, I know you live there, but, you know, I don't want a power plant.
Right.
Rangeley to be different, and so, I've never represented our area there. Um, I don't think he would fit at Town Hall.
That's okay. I didn't know how big he was, but that was just some of our conversations. And what you have planned is fine. But.
Well, I think it would be really good if some of the dinosaurs died. You know, it gets people to slow down, and then they have to slow down in the light of the sun.
There's other potential sources that we're gonna look at. And Jeannie and I have talked too much about a mention to her. I know that, uh, Fernal got a grant from T-Mobile for fifty thousand dollars for, uh, an outdoor space that, uh, they're building back in, behind some of the buildings. And I've looked at the grants, grant recipients from that, that, um, that program that T-Mobile does. They work fifty of them a year. Um, I think it's fifty. But we're gonna brainstorm and see what we can come up with. Uh, if there's anything that we can fit into some of these other poss.